The, uh, regular meeting. Again, Vice Mayor, members of the council, town staff, all the members of public are here to participate. Good to see you, welcome. Always a pleasure. Um, would you call the roll, please, Russell?
Councilmember Jablonski?
Here.
Councilmember Fitz Kelly?
Here.
Councilmember Bray Cruz?
Here.
Vice Mayor McKay?
Here.
Aaron Nelson?
Here. We all stand for the pledge. I love this next item. This is a... Anytime somebody comes to give us a check, it's, uh, it's an exciting thing in the town of, uh, Southwest Ranches. And, uh, Christopher Leon with the State of Florida, the, uh, Park Services Specialist. If I can get you to come on up and, uh, you've got, uh, a check that I hear with, um, regards to, um, providing some grant assistance with the Country Estates Park. So, we're very, uh, very excited, very appreciative. Welcome to the Town of Southwest Ranches. And listen, anytime you bring a check, you have priority, we'll, uh, love to have you anytime.
Good to hear, I'll make sure I bring more.
Great to see you, Christopher. Welcome to the Town of Southwest Ranches.
Thank you.
Talk into that mic a little bit more if you would.
Sure. Um, so, the Department of Environmental Protection is proud to administer a program called the Florida Recreation Development Assistance Program. This program is a competitive grant program that funds acquisition or development of lands for public outdoor recreational use. This year, we are very proud that we were able to invest more than $7 million in 137 recreational projects throughout Florida. Today, I have the honor presenting to you and your community a Florida Recreation Development Assistance Program grand check for $50,000 for Country Estates Park. These funds will pay for development of new multipurpose sports fields with amenities for softball, soccer, and landscaping. Congratulations on this grant award. I look forward to joining you again as we celebrate progress on this project.
Fantastic, Christopher. And as I'm sitting there, I see, uh, I see Astor with that big smile on his face and shaking his head. I know what he's saying, finally, finally, finally. We're gonna come down there, Chris, so we can get a, uh, we can get a picture. Absolutely.
If there are any other public speakers tonight, if you could please bring me your card during this hiatus.
Okay. This next item, the PACE program. Always good to see, Mr. Cohen is well, he's assistant to the County Administrator. And, Alan, if you don't mind coming up and tell us about this, uh, this PACE program and educate us. And, uh, it sounds like a pretty cool thing.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good to see you, by the way. Welcome to Southwest Ranches.
It's a pleasure.
Always a pleasure.
Thank you all for, uh, having me here. Uh, and it's, uh, nice to be here, uh, at the city. Uh, as some of you might know, I'm a former city manager. Andy and Russell know that, so, uh, that's where my heart often is. What I'm here to talk about is property-assessed clean energy. That's what the acronym PACE stands for. And it was a program that was originally devised to focus on energy efficiency projects or renewable energy projects. It's now been expanded as all, uh, additionally to resiliency projects. For example, impact windows. What makes this project unique? A homeowner can go to a conventional lending source right now and get a loan, or they can go to a PACE provider. And the difference here is that in, in the first instance, the home, the property owner, or, um, to, to clarify for your listeners, a, uh, both a residential and commercial property owner can go to a bank, or they can go to a PACE provider. The big difference is you're, you, the property owner borrowing directly from the bank, in the situation with PACE, it is essentially your property that is being assessed, the debt, not you as the individual property owner. And so, what's unique about that is that when, um, when your credit score is looked at and whatnot, this is not a debt that's included on your credit score because it's not an indebtedness to you. It's counted against the property. In most cases, when you sell your property, the debt would stay with the property and pass on to the next property owner, who would continue paying the assessment. And that's how these loans are paid. They're paid through a special assessment that is administered, uh, you know, by the county, um, to the property owner. They sign an agreement agreeing to the special assessment as part of the payback for the program. The, the program, uh, funds eligible projects. Uh, um, energy efficiency might be new insulation or a new roof or something to improve the efficiency. A new HVAC system. It could be renewable energy like solar panels. It could be impact windows, as I talked about earlier, and there's a whole range of programs. The county has, um, extensive information on our website, which we can make available to your residents as well. There are currently two PACE providers that are actively engaged. We're about to, within the next month, get two more online. They've already been approved by the County Board, and we're finalizing the paperwork, uh, with them. Uh, we believe in market competition and want to give consumers choice. So, a consumer would, uh, go to our site, look at the different providers, look at the different program offerings that they have. Some have certain types of fees, others don't. They also have different contractors available, and it's, it's pretty easy to, to go through the application process and get a determination as to whether or not you're eligible. The county has, um, instituted a number of consumer protections in the program to make sure that folks, particularly on the lower end of the income scale, are protected and not taken advantage of. We have anti-price gouging, um, uh, language in our ordinance that the PACE providers are obligated to ensure that contracted pricing fits within market norms. Uh, we, um, homeowners, uh, cannot just borrow, uh, any amount of money that they want in the program. Uh, there's a limit based on their total gross income, and there's a threshold, uh, with that to ensure that folks aren't over-leveraging themselves. This is relevant to folks on the lower end that might not have the credit access, but they can get, uh, the loan to their property. It's relevant to people on the higher end of the scale that might, might wanna save their leverage opportunities for doing something else, and by doing this, they're not reducing their opportunities to, to take on whatever debt they might need for other opportunities. And again, it's both commercial and residential. Uh, I'll, there's plenty that I could say, but I'd, I'd rather hear your questions and, and, uh, see what's on your mind.
A cou- a couple. I heard you say, uh, two providers, and, uh, you anticipate, uh, bringing onboard four, uh, providers with rego- four total?
Four total, correct.
Four total, so that's, uh, that's...
So, we, we already have Y-Green, and as a matter of fact, there's a Y-Green representative here tonight in case you have any questions for them. Uh, Renew is already onboard as well. Florida PACE and Renovate America are two that are going through the legal process right now. Our board has already given approval to them. We just need to, uh, sign the dotted line. Renovate, as a matter of fact, just formed their district last week, and now they're going through the final paperwork, and we're finalizing our agreement with Florida PACE.
And I, as a person that are interested, uh, as a homeowner, interested in doing whatever, installing, uh, more efficient windows, roof, or, uh, you know, other projects. Do I have, uh, would I have an opportunity with regards to these providers, or four providers, to negotiate with the four providers? How does that, uh, process, uh, how does that process work?
So, each of the providers has, um, the, the rates that they charge, uh, for different types of projects. It, it depends, as it does with, uh, any other lending institution, on the length of, uh, the, the loan. Projects that have a longer, uh, lifespan, so to speak, take longer to depreciate, will have a lower interest rate attached to it as opposed to the shorter-term projects. Uh, they are a little higher than what you might see in the average, um, you know, going to a lending institution. Uh, but that, you know, that's, uh, offset by some of the other advantages to it. I mean, it's not for everybody, clearly.
Right, no, I hear you. Do all the providers, do they, uh, all provide the same, uh, services? This, when I say, uh, that, you know, uh, I wanna replace my roof with, uh, whatever efficient, uh, uh, efficiency considerations. Would I be able to negotiate with the four providers, would they all be able to provide me with a quote on a roof or, uh, windows? I mean, is it overlapping? Is there, you know, one provider that provides a unique, uh, service and another one that provides a unique services? Are they all overlapping? And, and again, my only, my concern is obviously the, the opportunity to negotiate and, uh, and, uh, and, and compete for the, uh...
Right. Negotiate's an interesting word in this situation.
Okay.
What, um, so, the first answer I wanna give you is yes, there's great overlap in what the different providers will fund. Essentially, they're all funding most of the same things. Some of them might be a little more lenient than others in, in saying, yes, this, this applies. You might not think an HVAC system would apply, but it does because if you put it in an Energy Star system, you can save a lot of money, uh, in your energy bills, and, and that, that's what, uh, applies. Um, when, when you go to each provider, they give you a list of contractors, you get quotes from the contractors. And then, you know, you can get multiple quotes from one provider's contractors. You can go to two or three different providers' contractors and get quotes, and then decide which one is best for you. You can go through that if you so choose.
Okay. And, and there is the overlapping of, uh, those, uh, services that are, that are offered. It's not a situation where you have a provider that, uh, you know, the only one that provides, uh, you know...
Impact windows.
Impact windows, exactly, for the, for the subject of, uh, of conversation.
No, the, the only, uh, I will tell you that in the past, some providers only focused on residential properties and others only focused on commercial. We're seeing them overlapping now, and the ones that were doing only residential are starting to do both and vice versa.
Right.
But other than that, the types of projects, we haven't seen that levels of specialization. Would you agree? Yeah. Okay.
Great.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Um... This project, is it a county project?
So...
Or is it a state project?
It's, it's, uh, it's enabled by state legislation. Uh, so, uh, the State of Florida has a statute that allows for PACE districts to be formed, and those districts can then issue bonds, and those bonds are what provides the funding for the individual projects. So, the, the county is essentially agreeing to be a conduit for these different PACE districts, the providers, to come in and provide their services. We are not running, uh, the actual financing. We make no money off of any of the transactions that occur. We are simply administering their presence in our community and ensuring that they comply with rules that we have set up.
Okay, so, the PACE part of this, it's qualified people that, uh, contractors related to doing this type of work and have met all the qualifications related to doing so. Um, I guess what I'm getting at is you don't have a list of items or things like air conditioners, uh, refrigerators, dishwashers, um, insulation, uh, attic fans that residents can buy and install themselves and get a benefit or a discount on?
We do not, no.
So, it's not, it's not something a homeowner can do and participate in on their own. They have to go through one of these qualified contractors to get this benefit.
Correct, and it typically involves some sort of what we would call capital project.
Okay. So, whether it's insulation, roofing, attic fans, whatever it might be, yeah, it, it's... You can get a loan, or you can pay these guys, but if you paid these guys outright for the work, where's the benefit?
Do you wanna s...
It's okay.
How you doing? Rafael Perez, Y-Green Energy Fund. Uh, state statute allows an individual, if they wanna change their windows, they could do an owner builder permit. So, you could come to the town and say, "I wanna change my windows and do an owner builder." Now, we don't give that property or any money. They have to do it, and they come back to us with the permit and, and so on, then we'll refinance. So, that's one scenario if they're doing it themselves. So, they're doing it through a contractor, then we don't pay the contractor till the work is done, and then we disperse funding. So, a property owner, individual, could do their windows, they could do certain things. They can't do an attic fan, they can't do a roof.
So, basically, you all are educated through the state of the county on what energy-efficient items there are. They come inspect your house, they say, "Okay, your AC's 15 years old. You can buy a better HVAC si- air conditioning system and save you this much energy. You can buy, uh, add two feet of insulation to your attic, and you can do this stuff, and it's gonna save you this much money on your electric bill. And you can either do the financing and pay for it through the savings of what you're gonna save, and/or you can pay for it, or you can just pay for it straight."
Some individuals could do that. Most individuals, they know they need a roof, so they just say, "Hey, could you underwrite us? Could you, uh, can I get qualified?" Then there's a list of contractors, or they could bring a new contractor. They do the work, remember the city. Uh, I'm a general contractor. If I wanted to do work here, I have to provide my license, my general liability, workers' comp. They pull a permit. When the work is complete, then we disperse payment to the contractor. And then, the next tax cycle gets placed in the tax bill.
Okay.
Hi, and Vice Mayor, I appreciate your question because I just learned something tonight.
Okay.
All right. I didn't realize that an individual homeowner could do their own work, so, thank you.
Yeah, tha- thank you for, uh, sharing all this with, Mr. Cohen. A couple of questions. I was perusing your website earlier today, and, uh, one of the things, there was a little caveat that popped up, and that was, "Your mortgage provider may not agree with this." I'm giving you the simplified version of what it says. How, what has been your experience with that, or have you had any...
So, um, we, as, as part of the consumer protections that we set up, we, we're requiring the providers to check off one of three boxes. One of those boxes is to either get the approval of your mortgage provider or get the approval of your mortgage servicer to escrow the PACE assessment. The mortgage providers are hesitant to give their approval because they see PACE as a competing product to their own products. And so, they're, they're not happy about it. The, the mortgage servicers, on the other hand, it's in the best interest of the lender to escrow the payment to protect the asset and ensure that it doesn't be- become foreclosed on because the assessment is part of the tax bill. But again, that's one of the three boxes. So, we don't see that as, uh, being a terrible impediment. The other two boxes are demonstrated energy and/or insurance savings that are equal to or greater than what the assessment will be, or meeting the threshold limits that I talked about earlier, which is 4% of your gross income or 5% of the fair market value of the house, uh, or of the property, excuse me.
Uh, follow-up question, second question, um, based on, obviously, it's based on the project of, of what it would be that the homeowner's interested in. Um, what, what is a typical a- amortization schedule? Five, 10, 50-year?
It, it depends on the project. There is a, a statutory limit, I think, of 30 years. Most of the projects that we've seen have not exceeded 25, but many projects are five years. And it really depends on the nature of the work being done. Um, a- a- as you all know from your accounting here, some things depreciate much quicker and some things depreciate, have a longer life.
Is that what drives the, the amortization? Is the depreciation of the, of the item?
Yes.
Okay, so, a roof is, a roof is gonna be, it may go stretch out for 25 years. An AC unit may stretch out for five.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
It, it, you know, it's like a, a, you know, mortgage, early payoff. I mean, if, uh, you know, they negotiate, uh, something for 25 years and, you know, come into money some, uh, somewhere somehow, is that, do they have the potential to pay it off, uh, early?
So, one of the things, and as a matter of fact, uh, our, the gentleman from Y-Green's might be hearing this for the first time. We're looking at making some additional changes in our ordinance, and one of them is to address this specific scenario. Uh, some of the providers have a prepayment penalty if you pay early. We, and, and banks do the same thing. We don't think that prepayment penalty should apply if the government or financial institution is requiring, uh, the prepayment to take place. Uh, the FHA has moved more in the direction of supporting the program, but not in 100% of cases. So, you might have a property with an FHA mortgage, and they say, "You need to pay off your PACE assessment to sell your home." And in that case, since they're being forced to, we would say no penalty in that situation. And that's one of the changes that we're contemplating right now. So, right now, they can assess a prepayment penalty. Um, if you decide to pay it off early, you can, um, you know, the, the rationale for doing so, again, the, the, is, is case-specific because the, the debt is on the property, not the property owner. Uh, so, it all depends on the circumstances of the property and the property owner as to why they would wanna do that.
Well, listen, the, the, the proper, yeah, no, I, I hear what you're saying, but it still sounds, and I know that you were raised, uh, uh, no, absolutely, come on up, uh, add, uh, add to it.
The difference with our, our program is that we give property owners options. If somebody chooses to have the penalty, they'll have a better rate. If somebody chooses that they're not gonna live throughout, and they're gonna pay this off, then they could choose to add, uh, 1.5 points on the contract, and they have no penalty. So, we're giving property owners options. Some people will stay the whole time. I know our rates compared to the competition is almost a whole percentage point less. So, I think giving options to property owners and let them decide is the best way. We've done in, in, between Miami Dade and Broward, 4,500 projects for $100 million. In Broward County, we joined in August, and 10 cities joined first before the, the county program, and we've already done, I just pulled the numbers, 871 projects for $17 million, and we have another 700 projects for $13 million in, in progress currently. So, we believe that the best option is to let the property owner decide. If they want a better rate because they know they're gonna live throughout, you know, they're, they're gonna be in this home for the next 20 years, let them get a better rate if they choose. If they don't, so, we're giving the, the public the option.
What determines the rate? The interest rate? How does that determine?
The, the interest rate, remember, these are investors that provide, so the interest is tied to the LIBOR swap and what the rate. We, we have securitized a couple of times, we've got a double-A rating. We will get a, a third A on it, but it, it's just, it's such a new product. So, the industry still doesn't, you know, the market doesn't still believe that. I believe the more we do projects, the more the end, uh, the rate will go down.
Mayor, if I can jump in a minute, just a little.
Um...
The property owner's property, you said it's attached to the property, so it's not really on the homeowner supposedly. But the truth of the matter is, I've never heard anybody doing a loan of any kind and not writing somebody's credit score or their ability to pay it back. So, how does that work?
So, the state statute has a standard. We have a higher standard. We're almost all the same, I'm seeking for every group. So, we make sure that property owners have 10% equity in their property, paid their property taxes on time for three years of the period of ownership, be current on their mortgage, not be in bankruptcy, and no notice of default for the last three years. Couple of years back when we started, it was the investors, because the statute's here and the investors were here. The investors see that there was not, there was not a need to, to have, um, a property or not be current for three years on their mortgage. So, the delinquency rate on this is .5, and the default rate is .1. The delinquency rate in, in Miami Dade is like six or seven. The delinquency rate in Broward County is 3%, so, uh, it's really, really low, and a lot of people are taking advantages. I would say 85% of our projects are for windows and roofs because their insurance is so high, and this is a way for them to lower their insurance. Their insurance savings, in a lot of cases, surpasses the financing. Additionally, since we don't pay the contractor till the work is 100% complete, it's peace of mind. Right now, if you wanna do your windows, 50% upfront, 40% on delivery. I'm a general contractor, so, I've lived this, so, uh, you know, it's peace of mind, yes.
So, you don't run a homeowner's cri- you don't do a credit check on a homeowner?
We, we have to do it initially to determine that they're current on their mortgage, and they're not in bankruptcy. Is there another way? If there's another way, we would...
No, no, I understand what you're saying, but I'm saying, what if they have a credit score of 500?
That doesn't matter, sir.
Okay, wouldn't matter.
I mean, I could still, you know, at least in my culture, we always pay our mortgage first, that's number one, so...
No, no, clearly, I understand that, but some people have other issues or litigation or other things that happen that would affect their credit score.
The scenario I like to always use is, there's three options on the table. You go to your bank, you get a line of credit. Well, guess what? If you lose your job, the line of credit, you'll lose your house. If you go get a credit card, you're paying 23%. If you, if you use PACE, and for some reason, you lose your job for a year, and you don't pay that tax bill, it becomes a, a certificate. So, guess what? Somebody buys it, everybody gets paid, the city, the county, everybody gets their money, and then you get to fight another day, and hopefully, the next year, you get a job. Nobody's gonna lose their house for a $1,200 assessment. So, our average assessments are about $1,200 to $1,500 a year, so, a little bit more than $100 a month.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Andy?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Alan, thank you for coming in, it's good to see you. It looks like Bertha's not working you hard enough.
Keith, you have a couple of questions.
Yeah, just, just one question.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't ask you.
Couple of questions, just, just to be very clear. Keith, yeah, I'll, I'll be just a minute. Uh, this is a county program. It is in place. The town would be included by default unless we opt out, is that correct?
Correct, so, i- unless you specifically opt out, you're included.
Okay, and when, when is that date?
Uh, it's sometime next month. It's coming up within...
Okay, I thought it was, yeah, I thought it was in October, early October.
October 14th.
14th, okay.
He's tracking it closer than I am.
And how long's this running for? How long's this good?
In perpetuity, and, you know, uh, in, in, unless for some reason we decide it's not working for folks. Uh, and then there are termination clauses and allowances. Any financing arrangements that have already been arranged would continue, but no new ones would be written at that point. Okay, and, and I just wanna emphasize that there's absolutely no expense to the municipality. The only expense that we're incurring is administrative to, you know, administer and monitor the program. Uh, there's no money out of your pocket at all.
That's where I was going next, thank you.
Okay.
Keith? Yeah, I, I just wanted a clarification because several council members have contacted me about the program, and there's only so much information online. Wh- when it relates to the four PACE districts, is a district the entire Broward County, or is it beyond Broward County?
Actually, in, in one or more cases, the district is the entire state, and in other cases, the providers form specific districts to cover certain geographic areas.
Okay, but the four in Broward County would cover every municipality in Broward County?
That have agreed to, uh, participate in the program. So, so far, as of tonight, I think we have 15 or 16 cities that have said yes. There are three cities that already have PACE programs up and running, they've opted out, and we haven't heard anything from the remaining cities. And my guess is, most of them are just gonna let the deadline lapse, and they'll by default opt in.
So, if a resident wants a new roof, they can contact or look at the fees for all four, uh, PACE providers. They could choose one or more, and they say, "We need a roof." And if they didn't wanna do a builder-owner, as, uh, Vice Mayor McKay said, they would get a list of 10, 15 roofers that they could call and, and potentially negotiate a dollar amount of a contract, and then pace what the Y-Green does, is provide the financing mechanism to pay that contractor.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
And, and the question that...
Except, I don't know about 10 or 15 contractors, but...
How many?
There'll be a list of contractors.
How many average, on average?
It depends on most property owners. Once in a while, I'll get somebody that does go through 15 of them, but we have a limit, we have 1,000 contractors, you know? So, people choose, and if there's somebody that they don't, they don't like the, what we have because they have the, the local guy here that's been working for 30 years, we come, we certify them, we train them, we make sure their license, their docs are in order, and then they can be part of the program.
Okay, so, the, the way that the PACE provider is earning its income is as a bank, the interest rate that they're charging for the loan for the, uh, the product. Uh, what we didn't understand, because I asked, what is that in, in layman's terms, an average interest rate? Is it 10%, 5%, 12%?
Okay, so, we've seen interest rates roughly between 6% to 8%, depending on the length or, or term of the financing. Um, solar panels, on average, are a little, typically on the higher end of that range, and then, uh, all, all other types of projects will range depending on the, the term.
So, i- i- you've mentioned before a LIBOR swap, which would be a fluctuated, uh, rate.
That's what he said.
Right, so, but it's not. It, it seems like it is a fixed rate, so that a property owner could determine every year how much their interest is and, and principal is on, uh, the, uh, the loan.
When, when you sign, no, it's fixed, because if it was based on the LIBOR swap, how about if the rates go up next year?
Well, that, that's why I didn't understand it.
It's, it's fixed. Once, when I, when they ask me about the rates, the rates could change every month. Remember, the market moves, so, every month or every couple of months, the, the market can move and the rates change. But once that property owner signs a finance agreement, they're fixed for the 20, 30, 20 years that they...
That's what the question was.
Okay.
So, the resident, when they do sign, gets a fixed rate, 6%, 8%, and then it's... And then it's fully amortized and that fully amortized portion goes on their ad verum tax bill and gets paid annually.
And, and to, the, the PACE assessment is determined and that PACE assessment stays the same for the length of the financing.
Because it's on the ad verum tax bill, is any of that tax deductible?
Non-ad verum.
It's, it's a non-ad verum.
It's a non-ad verum.
It's not taxable. It's not, uh, tax deductible.
I, 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 I'm not a tax professional, but if you look at Section 17 of the IRS Code, it says for a local benefit, if you do something, you could get a local benefit. And the state statute says this is a compelling state interest. So if you do your roof, I benefit because the risk pool goes down. I always say, talk to your tax professional, we never say this, that's the best route, so everything is safe.
The, the two more questions that I'm being asked.
And, and I, just on that, the county hasn't even touched that question because of the mine, the potential minefields on that. So I just want to be clear, the answer you heard was not from the county, but from, from Y-Green. Okay?
My answer was from the IRS Code, section 17.
And, and we're not here to debate, I'm just clarifying.
And the, the, the other two questions that I'm getting from this side of, of the room is sometimes you buy a solar panel or an air conditioning, you can get a, an incentive or dollars back. Does a property owner get the dollar back or does that go to reduce the amount of the loan?
That's a good question.
Yeah, so right now for solar panels, there's a 30% credit by the federal government that was extended to 2020. So anybody that buys solar panels could get a credit from the federal government. The person receives that, so they choose to, that's, that's their rebate, that's their credit, that's their personal income taxes, so they receive that. Now, there is some rebates with FPL, with ACs, usually the contractor. At the time, what I've seen in invoices, your air conditioning is $7,500 FPL rebate. They write it there and they, and then they make the price 6,500. But once again, that's a negotiation between the property owner and the contractor. We're the financing vehicle, we protect, we look, we look at every invoice, we don't pay till the work is 100% complete. And once again, we are an option. If somebody doesn't want to use this program, which a lot of people sometimes don't because they don't like the rate, that's great.
And the final question that, that I got from this side of the room was lien priority. And if a resident fails to pay their, their ad verum tax bill and the property goes up for auction, what happens to the PACE lien that's on the property as well?
And that's an interesting question. In most cases, the PACE assessment is not paid off because it's still an ongoing obligation of the property. So it's different than some of the other indebtedness attached to that property.
But, but I assume.
So, so a mortgage would have to be paid off, the PACE assessment would not have to be paid off. Go ahead.
I don't know.
The, the, the state statute says. Mr. Attorney, the state statute says that a PACE assessment has the same dignity as a county tax or an assessment. So if some reason, for some reason, somebody defaults, the bank takes possession and a new owner gets it, then the, it, it rides with the property. That property owner, when they buy it, it doesn't just get dissolved.
No, I, I hear what you're saying, but that, that leads me to another question. A, a bank, we have a lot of them in the town, forecloses on a piece of property, the municipal liens on the property, et cetera. Is the bank paying the monthly PACE bill?
It's, it's a yearly, so they would just pay that one assessment. Remember, there's a roof on it. That roof is valuable, so if, let's say you do $20,000 and your assessment is $1,500 and you foreclose because of 1,500, I guess, or the rest of the taxes, but the $1,500, the bank will have to pay $1,500. He sells the house to you and now you carry with, you carry on with, or you, you negotiate the price and you settle the assessment.
So the, the short answer is yes, the bank, as the controlling entity of the property, would pay the assessment as they would pay all the other taxes. In the, in the case where there is a foreclosure and let's say there's a backlog of two years, that two-year backlog would have to get paid off, but the future payments would still be paid on the same assessment schedule. Did that bring clarity to your question?
Tax certificate that would be issued for taxes that are not paid, right? Just, it's like any other tax certificate that would be issued for taxes not paid.
Right.
Or assessment not paid.
Right. You good?
With, with the obligation of the new homeowner in that scenario, would they have an option to, you know, pay it off early? Or I guess they would just assume whatever the conditions were at the time that the financing was negotiated?
Honestly, sir, I don't know the answer to that, but I assume that if I'm buying a home and it has an assessment, the bank by law has to disclose that. And me as a buyer, I'm going to say, let's just dissolve it. All the assessments and all their agreements are placed in the tax rolls. So the title agent will see that and say, this is what it is, and it'll be disclosed. So at that time, the buyer and their agent and their lawyers will determine what's the best avenue for them to inherit it or assume it or pay it off when they, when they take possession of the bank, with the bank.
Pay it off with the conditions that were negotiated by the first homeowner.
You know, you've actually, I, I, you've raised an interesting question that I'm going to bring back to our legal folks and ask them about. Because I could see where a new homeowner in that situation, because of the interest rates.
Sure, darn right.
Yeah, they might want to pay it off early. So we'll take a look at that.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? Fantastic, listen, thank you, uh, thank you so much. I mean, obviously, if we don't do anything, that means that, was it October?
14th.
October 14th, I think.
Yes.
Yeah, it would become a part of this, this program. But appreciate, appreciate. I, I don't, I don't think that we have, I'm only if you opt out. It's, I get the impression that you only actually have to take if you opt out. If we don't do anything, we're already ma, uh, part of the program, effective October 14th.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, and if you have any other questions, Andy or Russell have my contact information. Happy to come back out if need be as well.
Great, Alan, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Appreciate both of your time.
Yeah, thanks very much, appreciate it.
Thank you for answering all of our questions. Have a good evening. Counsel, if you don't mind, I know there's a lot of personal assets here and it becomes an expensive proposition for those that are paying for the representation. And if it is okay with you before public comment, can we move items 10 and 11? Before, before public comment? Is that, is that okay with everybody? Can I get a motion in, in a second so I can, we can vote?
10 and 11?
10 and 11.
Make a motion to move 10 and 11 to the front.
Okay, motion to move 10 and 11 prior to public comment. I'm sure there isn't any public comment about that or anybody have any objections. Call the question, please, Russell.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Fissa Kelly? Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, item number 10.
Mayor, items number 10 and 11 are on the agenda. Both are waivers of plat. While they were advertised, fully in accordance with the town code and Florida law, they were inadvertently not listed on our current agenda as quasi judicial, but they are. So we will treat them as such for purposes of this meeting. So the rules of quasi judicial procedure are in the town's code. It's actually in, in books in the back of the room. If anyone would like them read into the record for ADA purposes or otherwise, we are happy to do so. If not, we will proceed with a quasi judicial proceeding and swear in anyone who wishes to speak on items 10 or 11 on the agenda, and then Russell can read in the first resolution. So seeing no objection. Now, Russell, if you could, anyone who wishes to speak on items 10 or 11, please stand and raise your right hand to be sworn in.
Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Thank you, Russell, if you could please read in resolution number 10.
A resolution and final order of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida approving waiver of plat application number WP-14-16 to subdivide approximately 4.76 net acres of property into two lots of 2.38 net acres apiece, generally located on the west side of Appaloosa Trail, approximately 1/4 mile south of Sterling Road, and described as the north one half of the north 324.17 feet of tracks 27 and 28 in Section 2, Township 51 South, Range 40 East, Everglades Sugar and Land Company subdivision, according to the plat thereof, recorded in Plat Book 2, page 39 of the Dade County, Florida Public Records, less the east 20 feet of track 28, authorizing the mayor, town administrator and town attorney to execute any and all documents necessary to properly effectuate the intent of this resolution, providing for recordation and providing an effective date.
Thank you, is the applicant present? Counsel, do you wish to proceed without the applicant being present?
No.
I was going to say.
I mean, I think the applicant should be here.
Absolutely, what happens, we have some questions.
Yeah.
You know?
Representatives here, right?
So it, it's up to the council, what do we, I mean, it's, it's rare that the applicant wouldn't show up for their item.
Representatives here, correct, or no? No?
Oh, you're 11.
Oh, you're 11, okay.
So it's up to the council, if you wish to proceed with this item at this time or make a motion to table it.
Uh, listen, that's easy for me, you know, and, and there are some questions.
I'll make a motion to table.
Motion in a second to table.
Well, uh, yeah, let's do it to a time and date certain, if you don't mind, so.
No, I don't have a problem with that.
Re-advertising, Russell?
September 29th would be the next.
No, no, the next quasi judicial meeting.
Oh, we can do that anytime. Be the first meeting in October then?
Is that when you come? It's every.
Wow.
He only comes.
Never had that happen. It's great, why would, yeah. That's the only thing I can think of. You know what, you're right, you're right.
Sorry.
It won't be happening. Can anybody call him, see if they can go?
13th? October 13th, that's his?
It's October 13th at 7:00 PM.
Okay. I amend my motion to, October 13th, 7:00 PM.
Thank you, Steve, second or?
Second.
Okay. Motion in a second to move it to October, to table it and move it to October 13, uh, meeting. Call the question, please, Russell.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Fissa Kelly? Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, item number 11.
Thank you, Russell, if you could please read in item number 11.
A resolution and final order of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida approving waiver of plat application number WP-13-16 to subdivide approximately 2.71 net acres of property for the purpose of providing an access strip to an adjoining lot of record, generally located on the east side of Hancock Road, approximately 1,000 feet north of Luray Road and described as the north one half of track 25 in Section 3, Township 51 South, Range 40 East of the Everglades Sugar and Land Company subdivision, according to the plat thereof, recorded in Plat Book 2, page 39 of the Dade County, Florida Public Records, less the north 267 feet and less the west 30 feet, authorizing the mayor, town administrator and town attorney to execute any and all documents necessary to properly effectuate the intent of this resolution, providing for recordation and providing an effective date.
Thank you, I see the applicant present, Jane from Police Land, more importantly than Jane, and she's hiding in the back, for anyone who didn't see her, is Elizabeth, who worked at the town for a very, very long time.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, perfect.
Jane, if you could just please state your name and address for the record that you've been sworn in, then I'll turn it over to Jeff to do a presentation.
Jane Storms, Police Land Surveyors, 5381 Nob Hill Road, Sunrise, Florida for the applicant. I have been sworn, it's good to see everyone again.
Likewise.
Thank you, Jane. Jeff, could you please enter the staff report to the record?
So entered. We, we have a very simple waiver of plat here. We've got the property owner that has over five acres with access to Luray Road who needs, for medical purposes, secondary access to Hancock. Now, the fact that they need it for medical purposes is really irrelevant, but I'm, I'm just kind of adding that in there, that is the motivation here. They want secondary access and what they did is, they acquired a property, the intervening property between them and Hancock. That property is 2.7 acres. They are slicing off a piece of that as a driveway to their, to their, their home, which is the Luray Road property. And then they are going to sell the remainder of the property without that little strip. So they're really just transferring a quarter of an acre from one property to another so they can have an access driveway. They could have done it through an easement and not even gone through the waiver of plat process, but being an attorney, they, they wanted to make sure it was airtight and that there would never be an issue with, with an easement and, and a future owner. So the net result of this is that the 5.35 acre property upon which the, the Parles live is going to increase to almost 5.6 acres in size. And the 2.7 acre property, that is the donor property of this driveway, is going to be decreased in size to about 2.47 acres. So all, all code requirements are met. The drainage district has, is already processing the permit or has possibly issued the permit for the culvert crossing for this driveway onto Luray. We don't have any issues or recommended conditions other than the standard condition. And that Elizabeth come up here and do the presentation for the applicant. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Jeff. Before I turn it over to the applicant, has any council member had any expert communication concerning this matter? Seeing none, Jane, do you have anything else to add? Seeing none, Mayor, turn it over to the public for testimony and then we'll close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Any member of the public wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, public comment closed. Mayor, over to you for deliberation.
Thank you, Keith. Counsel?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve. Any additional questions, comments or concerns? Seeing none, call the question, please, Russell.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Fissa Kelly? Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Nice seeing you.
Good to see you all. Okay. Item number five, public comment.
Mayor, there's three speakers tonight. Each speaker is allowed to speak for three minutes each. The order is David, Noel and Deke.
Thank you.
My name is David Kozinski.
David, listen, listen, listen.
Yes. The podium's distracting.
Well, that's okay, leave the podium there and take it out and you can certainly face the other direction. I don't have a problem with it. But the other thing is too, remember, you're.
Yeah. I'm supposed to address you as well.
Right, okay.
All right. Thanks.
Well, we have a lot of flexibility.
My name is David Kozinski, I'm a candidate for District 4, Town Council. I moved to the ranches in 1997. I came here for law school. In 2007, I purchased my home. After I purchased my home, I have organized a local neighborhood crime watch and I've been elected to the Board of Directors of my homeowners association. I'm also an attorney licensed by the Florida Bar. Part of my responsibilities are bringing parties together that are in disagreement. I've also litigated cases, I've won cases, I've lost cases. In each case, I've treated my opponent with respect. So I bring that if elected to the council. I, I've also, if I'm elected, what I would fight to do is I will fight changes to our zoning, bring more green open space to our town, and I will also fight our traffic problems. Breaks my heart when I'm driving down the road and I see an animal run over. I think another, one of God's creatures has been taken from us. You've got to fight our traffic problems in a town, and I will fight for that if elected. I will fight to keep our taxes low and I'll fight to ensure that our tax dollars are conservatively spent. I will do that with the temperament of a councilman. My name is David Kozinski, I'd like to ask for your vote in November. Thank you so much.
Don't tell them, who's next? No, I'm just kidding. Well, listen, believe me, who's next? We'll just rotate it.
Our, our third speaker is Deke Schroder. Here he comes, Noel's up, here he is.
And that concludes public comment, the next item number. You're up, Noel.
Again, I'd like this council to take a real hard look at the budget. There is so much in there that does not need to be in there to raise the rate as high as you are going. This is the largest rate increase this council has ever put forth against the residents of our town. It is not. It is not necessary. There is a lot of waste that's in there. Well, let's call it little tiny puddles of money, that some of them are actually large lakes. You need to actually read the budget, instead of like Johnny Carson used to do, and put it to his forehead and make a decision. Because that's what it appears you've done. You've rubber stamped it. There is no rhyme or reason for the amount of fluff and the amount of excess baggage that is in there, and no constraints on any of the programs being put there. You have excess engineering, excess, uh, surveys, where you're looking at where all the mailboxes are, the rocks, the little trees, the bushes. You're getting surveys that say all of those wonderful, nonsensical, stupid things, when all we want is the roads paved. We don't want the other dribble. And it's your responsibility to find out where the dribble is and cut it out. So I say to you, read the budget. As I was told during the break, well, there's one more budget hearing. Well, guess what, people? Ninety-nine percent of any cuts are done on the first one, if not at the workshop. There is no going to be, you're going to rubber stamp it come the next hearing on the twenty-ninth, and that's gonna be it. Thank you.
I don't know. It's pretty hard act to follow. Uh, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, Andy, Keith. Dee Schroder, fifty-five oh-one, Thrall Brad Lane. I just would like to remind everybody and the residents, um, that we have an election coming up in November. Please execute your right to vote. Um, I received a, uh, email from the President's Council here in the town of Southwest Ranches that we will be having a debate, and this will be held October seventeenth at seven P.M., right here in our own town hall. To hit on something that Noel Hollingsworth was talking about, our budget. I, as a girl, love to spend money, so, you know, normally I would like to do this, but if there's any way to shave some of this off, and there looks like there is some room to do some work, to take some of this off, to maybe bring it down a little bit, I'm sure the residents would greatly appreciate it. As for myself, running for a seat for District Four, I'm asking for everybody's support. I've been in this town for thirty-plus years. I've been involved with the, um, the conception of forming our town. When Broward County told us that we were going to be either annexed by Pembroke Pines or Davie. So the fight was hard, but we did it, and I'm sure there are no regrets. I have none. I love my little town. I've also worked with B.S.O. when we had our C.O.P. program. I did that for two years and had that up. I've sat on several boards. I've been involved in all the events in the town, brought my children in, who I've raised two girls here and grandchildren now, and even the littlest one was out there planting trees with December. So I've tried to stay on top of everything. I will continue to do this tirelessly, with no remorse whatsoever. This is my town also. I love the way it looks. I want to preserve our type of lifestyle, so I'm asking for your support. Come November, don't forget. Vote. Denise Schroder. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes public, uh, comment. Item number six, board reports. Any members of any of our committees and boards? Any comments? Seeing none, item six is... Oh, I'm sorry, Aster. Listen, I love that, uh, smile that was brought to your face with that check and what's gonna result from it. Absolutely.
Yes. Aster nine, fifty-four eighty, Southwest one seventy-eighth Avenue. I just wanna say, um, very grateful to see the fifty thousand dollars added to that park, because we have put, uh, the foundation has earmarked twenty thousand for that project also. And it has been a long fight, maybe about ten years we've been working for this, and to see it come at least near fruition is great. The other thing is, since we need more money for doing, to do more things for the rest of the parks, I'm asking your support, and to spread the word, as of the twelfth of November, we're having our second annual Classic Car Show, Ride for the Ranches. So I'd like to see everybody coming out to Ride for the Ranches. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Aster. Always a pleasure to see you. All right, that concludes, uh, board reports. Item number seven, council member comments. You're good? Freddie?
Doug?
Keith?
I gotta say something. You know that. You know that, right? Sorry. Uh, just, uh, two, uh, I think very quick comments. Um, one is, I wanted to, uh, thank Keith, uh, for, uh, his help in, uh, arranging the program we had last night. I wanna thank Katie Edwards for her, uh, participation. Um, we had a great, uh, opportunity here to really learn about sober homes, recovery residences, and, uh, really get a good understanding of what we can do, what we can't do, and we're gonna continue to work on that, the things that we can do. And, um, uh, we really heard last night the residents' concerns, and, uh, and I'm also appreciative of all the residents that showed up, um, and, and really were very positive in their comments and how they, uh, how they addressed us. So it was a great, it was a great opportunity. I thought it went really well. It was a good exchange, and, um, and I just appreciate Keith and, and all the work that went into getting that set up, and Andy as well, but, uh, I think that was mostly Keith, so thank you. The other thing, I ju- I just gotta say quickly, I'm not gonna make a big deal about it, but, uh, you know, I know, I know, I'll just speak for myself, but I know there's others up here that, we read this budget forward and backwards. Um, there, there's not a line in this budget that I have not read, and, um, and I do take some offense to the indication that we don't look at it and we just gloss over it and we don't... I read that thing, it takes me a couple of weeks to go through that book, and I go through that book. And so, um, you know, I understand that we, you know, there are differing opinions on what we should spend money on and what we should not spend money on, but, um, I go over that. I know others go over that, and, and we have conversations, detailed conversations with Andy. We have detailed conversations with Marty. Um, we, we've, we've discussed it, um, over the last several months, we've been discussing it. So, um, i- it is a difficult year, um, because there is an increase there, but, uh, but I don't want anyone in town to think that this is not, this is just being glossed over and not looked at. This is being looked at by a lot of people in a lot of detail, so, uh, I just wanna make that point. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve, and, uh, and ditto. I know how much time and effort is put into this process, how important it is, uh, to everybody up here, that we have an accounting of everything, uh, spent to the penny and, um, you know, a commitment and a confirmation that it is being appropriated, uh, properly, appropriately, and, uh, these are important, uh, you know, issues and projects with regards to this town, uh, moving, uh, moving forward. I appreciate that. Just, uh, real quickly, Andy and I went over at the invitation of Mayor of, uh, Miramar to discuss and, uh, update, uh, the current, uh, status of, uh, waste hauling. It was a constructive, uh, conversation, uh, debate, um, and, uh, you know, you know, potentially this evolving monopoly as a result of what waste management is doing and some of the companies that they are acquiring. So it was, uh, it was a constructive, uh, uh, conversation. It'll be, uh, very interesting to see how it, uh, how it evolves. Um, I get the impression, it, uh, sounds to me, and Andy, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, that, uh, to preserve, um, you know, these, uh, these rates, and, and remember, there is, uh, an issue with Department of Justice and this, uh, this evolving, uh, monopolistic, uh, scenario for, uh, waste management, that, um, uh, is, is, is part of this, uh, agreement that municipalities will have an opportunity at, um, approving another five-year, uh, agreement with the, uh... My time is up. Can I, can I get a couple? Can I just go, I'll be done in just one minute, but thank you.
Follow Robert's rules, you could have more time.
That's good, that's good. That is very, very good. So I anticipate, uh, most of everybody that was there to take advantage of that and, uh, preserve this, uh, this price structure and commitment for another five years, and then the fund's gonna be, uh, begin. And again, it has, uh, everything to do with, uh, with options. When it becomes, uh, you know, with regards to, uh, disposal, that's probably, uh, the issue. Finding service providers to provide the service, there are some options, but when it comes to the disposal component, uh, the options are, uh, limited, and that's, uh, potentially where it becomes, uh, problematic. And who knows? Somewhere down the line, maybe the town of Southwest Ranches could be involved in that discussion, simply because of, uh, what exists out west and the assets that, uh, currently owned and available by Broward County. So I just wanna let you, uh, let you know, and, uh, we'll see where that goes. And again, I appreciate, uh, your time, uh, Andy, and, uh, as always, uh, Keith's feedback. Okay, that concludes our council member comments. Item number eight, legal comments.
Uh, sure, Mayor. I have, uh, just a few. Yesterday, there was mediation in, uh, the town runway case between the property owner and the, uh, the resident who was trying to close off the runway. Uh, the town was there, Rod, uh, preso- provided, uh, representation for the town with, uh, Assistant, uh, Council there. And from what I was told, Rod, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I was told that the parties settled in that they're allowing the, um, uh, fencing of the person who wanted to fence their property to the same distance as the fence that was built in the property that has a pool next to them. I know Vice Mayor McKay understands what I'm talking about, because I've walked that runway with him a hundred times, so if you can explain it better than that, uh, please do.
I can't explain it better, but unfortunately, that's a little far, but it's okay. When it clears, when those trees get cleared, it'll be okay.
So, um, that case has been settled, and, uh, the property owners are happy. We were really taking a tertiary role in that, telling them to, uh, work it out, but we were required to attend mediation and to provide input to Judge Speckler as well, so, uh, that matter was concluded yesterday. Uh, this afternoon was a little bit of a surreal afternoon, uh, and I just wanna, uh, tell everyone publicly, you know, um, Andy had gone with, uh, the mayor in the morning to, uh, this, uh, waste management meeting, and were very cordial with everyone, so we were, we were surprised later in the day, uh, to receive a, a phone call from Davie concerning, uh, fire services. Um, I've kept you guys up to date as much as possible about the negotiations, and really where we stalled out, uh, probably four or five months ago at this point, probably four months ago, really centered on, on Davie's position that, uh, they wanted an automatic escalator of five percent annually for the length of the contract. The town and the town council's position has always been, we're not agreeing to automatic escalators. If you can show us what the increase is, CBI, insurance, uh, equipment, whatever, you know, potential, the, the, the increase is, we're happy to discuss that with you, similar to our police contract, which is not automatic, but it has a cap and, and an ability for them to prove to us what the increase is. So, uh, when, when talks failed, um, and, and even prior to that, we met with, uh, Davie, and they told us, you know, please, we're here to, to assist you, and we're here for you, and, and we made it clear that, listen, this is a long-term commitment. We are gonna reach out to, uh, other providers to try to get, uh, competition, to make sure that the town residents are being, uh, provided the best services possible. Uh, when that occurred, we reached out to, uh, B.S.O. I sent, uh, B.S.O. our wish list. Doubt they'll ever agree to it, but we, we did send B.S.O. our wish list. And then, uh, when talks failed with, uh, with, or, or slowed down, I guess, or reached a stalemate, uh, with Davie, um, I believe it was last week, Marty got an email back, um, from their finance department, saying that they don't have the personnel or the time, if I'm misparaphrasing it, tell me, uh, the personnel or time to get Marty the material that he needed to justify the increase in the fee. Uh, that was the last time we heard anything from them, so at that point, I, uh, cordially said, well, we need to explore all options in case this, uh, goes south. So I spoke to Andy, and, and I said, you know what? Let me reach out to Sam Goran at Pines, and send a cordial email saying, listen, politics aside, you know, issues aside, if a layperson were to look at a map of our area, they would figure out some way of saying Pines to the western boundary, Davie to the eastern boundary, the town would probably have the best coverage ever because of the location of, of the possible, uh, stations that could be on the east and west side. Uh, what are your thoughts? Uh, Sam Goran said he would speak to Charlie Dodge. Charlie Dodge then reached out to Andy and said, hey, you know, are you guys really serious about this? Uh, and Andy, I don't believe has actually gotten back to him yet. Um, he was waiting to hear if the council would even wanna entertain such a notion, but, uh, and am I correct? You hadn't gotten back to Charlie?
Yeah, I, I actually responded to him. I told him that I would be in touch. He wanted to be certain, and, and I'm sure that their commission wanted to be certain, that our, our council was, was on board and was, was willing to entertain those discussions. And, and as I've done your individual briefings this week, I have touched base with all of you on this, and, uh, certainly reached consensus on, on exploring options.
So, um, we were exploring options while still negotiating in, in full good faith to try to see if we could resolve the open issues. Uh, really, the, the escalator is the remaining open issue with the town of Davie. Apparently, something must have happened within the, the week that, that I'm not really aware of. I don't know if any of us are aware of. But, uh, today, we got a telephone call with, uh, Davie, uh, uh, Andy did, and I don't know if this is gonna go further or what's gonna, uh, transpire of it, but I wanna disclose it, that Andy got a phone call from, uh, the town administrator of Davie, uh, advising him that, uh, he didn't feel that we were negotiating in, in good faith because of the fact that we, it seemed that we were exploring other options, so as a result, he didn't feel that that was negotiating in good faith, and as such, that they were not gonna seek an extension of fire service, and they were done with providing the town with fire service after this contract expires. So, um, that is the latest on that. Uh, since that, that occurred, um, I believe that, uh, some of their council members have touched base with both our mayor and vice mayor, I believe, um, concerning this matter. A lot of misinformation going back and forth about their side. Uh, we've now heard stories that mayor, maybe the mayor of Pembroke Pines may have said something to jest and what, to one of their commissioners, and that might have escalated it even, even further. So this is yet to, to be seen what occurs, um, but on the positive side, because of the fact that we reached out to B.S.O. initially just to get a price comparison, I mean, you're spending almost three million dollars a year. You wanna make sure that you're still getting the, the best bang for your buck. Uh, we reached out to B.S.O. and, and Ron Gunsberger, who, who, um, you know, uh, had met with Chief Bennett, I believe, yesterday, the, the B.S.O. folk met, uh, just preliminarily, uh, to see what services were needed, was extremely cordial and, uh, said that, uh, B.S.O. would love to provide the town with several options uh, for fire service and that they're extremely interested. So we have a, a year to, to figure this out, but, uh, we, we've been very happy with Davie. You know, they provide excellent service. We were, uh, incredibly surprised, um, by the phone call we received. We, we hope we can resolve our issues, but if not, the town is well-covered and has other, uh, potential options that will fully be explored. Andy, I, I think that's about it on, on that one.
Okay, I think that was a very thorough summation of, of certainly where I find, where we find ourselves, and we'll continue to s- explore all options to, uh, to provide the best coverage and protection for the town, for the residents, at, at, at a fair price.
That's it, Mayor. No further public comment.
And just to add a little bit, uh, to that, Keith, I did, uh, reach out to, uh, Mayor Paul, just before the meeting started. She did call me, uh, back, and, uh, Keith is absolutely right, you know, with regards to this, uh, misinformation, the things that were, uh, you know, um, thrown out, uh, they're allegedly, uh, one-sided. You know, I, I assured her that there was two sides of the story, and I assured her that, uh, there was a lot of, uh, back and forth, uh, communication, but we would be glad to come to the table and sit down so that, uh, we can make sure that we understand, you know, what was discussed, the accuracy of the, uh, discussions and the, uh, and the concerns, and the reason, obviously, that, that we were put in a position where we had to, um, take a look at, uh, at some of, uh... of, uh, some of those, uh, some of those options. Uh, she was very, uh, receptive, a little cold initially, but, uh, once we, the, the discussion, uh, continued, and having, uh, cementment, uh, knowledge of, uh, those discussions via Keith and, uh, Andy, things settled down a little bit, and, uh, I offered, uh, them an opportunity to come to the table to sit down, um, her and, uh, hopefully, uh, Rick and their, uh, and, uh, their attorney, John Raisin, with Andy, I, and, uh, and Keith, to see if, uh, we can, uh, you know, resolve this, because it's not that, uh, not that big a deal. And, uh, obviously, I think, uh, the, the, the big, uh, issue was going out there and, uh, finding out, uh, what was available, because they put us in that position, you know, what, uh, what if? They were very, um, 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 non-negotiable with regards to this five percent escalator, you know, the difference between, you know, what the costs were, what the contract was, and the difference, listen, we found out that the city of Pembroke Pines with our contract were generating, they were netting almost a million dollars a year. You know, that's pretty, uh, that's pretty significant, and, uh, doesn't seem unreasonable to make the request, why the five percent escalator? Let's talk first about, uh, you know, where we are, what we pay in the, in the difference, and then, uh, talk about that. Listen, might be, uh, something that is legitimate, based upon, uh, the information that, that we get and we evaluate it, but we don't, uh, know, but Carte Blanche confirmed a twenty-five percent increase over five years, uh, isn't something that...
Actually, Mayor, the proposed contract was ten years.
Over ten years?
So if you add up the five percent a year for ten years, it, it tells you how significant of a dollar amount we were actually referring to.
I apologize, uh, for that, fifty percent, uh, increase over the next, uh, ten years. So, you can see why, you know, we have in this, the discussion and, uh, and, uh, and why we are in the position we are now, and, uh, as I told, uh, Mayor Paul, we couldn't be more thrilled and happy with the service that they're providing, we'd love to continue the relationship, but, uh, at least give us an opportunity to sit down and have this conversation, this discussion, to see if we can get reconciled. She said she would be back in touch with me, so we'll see where that, uh, goes. And in the next couple of months, if she does, we have the opportunity to sit down and have that conversation, I absolutely will, uh, pass along that information, I'm sure Keith and Andy will, is, uh, as well. Okay, that concludes, uh, uh, item number eight, legal comments. Item number nine, administration comments. Andy?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and the only thing I'll add to that is, uh, you know, Davy has done an outstanding job with us. Uh, I'm hopeful that this is just kind of a, a miscommunication or a glitch that we'll be able to work through, and, uh, we'll certainly do our best to do that. Uh, the only other item I had was, I, I just wanted to go back and revisit the PACE program presentation from earlier. You all understand that, uh, unless we opt out, we're in, so if you have any concerns with it, uh, if you have any additional questions, there's information we can provide to you, uh, you know, please, please let me know.
Andy, if you could please also address the XO Windstream issue, or if you want, I can do it, but, uh...
Go ahead.
No, no, I'm...
No, because I mean, you've been involved in it from the contract standpoint, so...
Yeah, I know, I, there's...
That's a, a legal issue.
Right, I, I, I'm sorry, Mayor, that, uh, I forgot to mention this as part of the comments. Um, the town, by actual law, has to have a secondary internet and telephone provider in the event of a, a natural disaster, hurricane, power outage, or, or otherwise. Um, our current secondary provider was inherited from Tamarack, is a company called, uh, XO Communications. Um, I have found them in, incredibly impossible to deal with, I, I, I believe their salesperson is one of the, uh, uh, worst, um, liars I've ever met in my entire life. Um, and, in fact, when I asked him to modify our provision of the contract, he said their legal counsel refused, uh, to, uh, uh, do the modification, and then had Katie Edwards call their legal counsel, and he said, the guy never asked me to change that, you know? So, um, as, as a result of that, uh, the, the relationship, um, is not great for a secondary provider whose sales, uh, person is as close to deplorable as I've ever met in my entire life. So, a, as a result of the fact that their contract has expired, uh, you know, we decided, you know what, we better go out and look for, um, potential alternative options. Um, apparently, and, and I learned this, there, there are people in the space that, and probably Councilman Brett Cruz knows this, actually has the contracts with all the, the different groups and, uh, these secondary providers, and we met with one of those, uh, people, and they got us bids from three or four companies, and at this point, uh, the most, uh, the cheapest bid came in from a company called Windstream, and it saves the town actual money from XO, so it winds up being a much, uh, less expensive service. It's a couple of hundred dollars less a month? Uh, a hundred and fifty dollars, uh, less a month, but the difference is, they give us something that I learned, and Bob, I'm sure you know what this is, called a SIP trunk, okay? And the town would get one of these, and, uh, I thought it was, what is the SIP trunk? And, and apparently, it's an, an alternative way of getting telephone, uh, service in the event of a storm, so not only do we have backup lines, but then we would have, uh, additional, uh, cable lines as well, that could transmit, uh, telephone calls. Uh, Andy did the, um, um, quality control check and reference check, and, uh, spent, uh, time speaking to, uh, the person at Live Oak, uh, yesterday. The reason why I'm even mentioning this to the council is, there are certain service providers that exceed the procurement limitations, Comcast, FPNL, et cetera, that are required, but the contract's only seven thousand dollars a year, which is actually less than our current provider, so we save a little bit, but because it's a three-year contract, we exceed Andy's maximum scope of, uh, of authority to sign, but you're required to have it, and they bid it, so, you know, it, it's one of those strange situations. So as a result of that, we're just giving you the, the heads up that the town is looking to switch service providers from, uh, XO to this new company called Windstream, and Andy can tell you, um, what he heard about them from, uh, uh, the people at Live Oak that use them as well. That was it.
And it was, just as part of that conversation, Keith, and, uh, I, I get the impression that, uh, because of it's a three-year con, uh, tr- contract, uh, Andy did it exceed your, uh, statutory, uh, spending authority? So, um, from the, the council's perspective, are you looking for us to give you authorization to negotiate, uh, this contract, especially in light that we've got, uh, four bids, and the end result, the, the net result is we save a hundred and fifty dollars a month, and plus, we get, uh, services and, uh, additional amenities that we didn't have with the previous, uh, provider?
That's correct, Mayor, it's like consensus from the council for us to move forward with that.
Yeah, I'm good.
Yeah, I'm good.
Do it.
Freddie?
Fred?
Yuri?
Thank you.
Sounds like you got, uh, it's unanimous, Sandy. Okay. Thank you, Keith. Four and a half. Four and a half. Okay, item number twelve, I believe.
Would you like me to read that into the record, Mayor?
Yes, uh, please, Russell.
A resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving an addendum to the agreements with Bergeron Emergency Services as the primary vendor, Grubbs Emergency Services LLC as a secondary vendor, and Ashbrit Inc. as a tertiary vendor to provide debris removal and disaster response recovery services. Authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Russell, Andy?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, as, as Russell said in the title, these are our emergency, emergency services providers, in the event of a hurricane of an, or a, another natural disaster. It's important to us to, uh, in order for our quick response, and then ultimately to be reimbursed by FEMA as, as, as we can be. We need to have these contracts in place. These vendors have been outstanding, they've been good partners with us, uh, which you don't see, because we haven't had a storm, but even just doing our prep, in our, our planning, our, uh, dry runs, as it were, the, the support from these vendors has been outstanding. I know Jason's here today from Bergeron Emergency Services. Uh, as I said, they've been a great partner, we just want to extend that contract and have it in place, uh, hope to never use it, but it's a question of having it in place so that we're ready.
Thank you, Andy, council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second approve, any members of the public wish to comment on this item? Bob?
Yeah, just some institutional, uh, recollection. Wasn't it Ashbrit, and I don't want to spread rumors, but wasn't it Ashbrit who really screwed up the billing, and we had to bring some firm in to audit their billing? I don't think they were such good partners back when, uh, when Wilma hit. Um, Keith, I don't know if you remember all that.
There, there was an issue where the, the FEMA claimed that, and Andy, I don't know if you, this was way before your time or not, that, that, that FEMA, uh, reimbursed the town seven hundred and twenty-six thousand, roughly, if I remember, um, dollars more than they believed the town was owed. Um, I don't know which vendor caused it, because we had, you know, that I'm not a hundred percent sure of, so, um, uh, actually, Lee Rickles, if I recall, was one, uh, uh, doing that at the time. But a, as a result of, uh, uh, the discrepancy, the town hired, uh, two guys who actually resolved it, and, uh, the town, the town actually was determined to be correct, and, uh, it was a very little bit amount of difference, I think like thirty-five thousand or something like that.
I don't think it was that high.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't remember if it was Ashbrit and, uh, Bob. Do you, a hundred percent?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't think so, Sandy's shaking her head, I don't think so. What was it? Yeah. What, uh, just for, I just, listen, I want to, because Bob's a hundred percent, and, uh, you did the research, Sandy, if you don't mind, just to clear the record, you know...
Russell mentioned PBS and J had an issue with Davy, and so he thinks it was the same one here.
That's what it was, you're absolutely correct. Now I remember.
PBS and J.
Thank you, Mayor, yes, this was before my time, but Ashbrit was a part of the debris removal process.
Right.
So I, I don't know who did actually the monitoring of the paperwork at the time.
Yes, PBS and J, that's it, you're absolutely...
Peanut butter and jelly did it, yep.
Yeah, they did the monitoring, if I remember correctly.
It was the monitoring that's...
The discrepancy when they were, uh, weighing it and, uh, processing it, and it was not Ashbrit, it was, uh, that, uh...
Peanut butter and jelly.
That's right, peanut butter and jelly, that's correct. So we want to clear the, uh, record. Ashbrit and, we're, uh, we know that you were involved in that, uh, that process, so... We have a, any other members of the public wish to comment on this item? So you know for the public comment, public comment is now closed. Again, we have a motion to second to prove, any additional questions, comments, or concerns, council? Seeing none, call the, uh, roll, please, call the question, please, Russell.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli? Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, item number thirteen.
So, resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving an addendum to the agreement with O'Brien's Response Management, Inc., to provide debris monitoring services, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing for an effective date.
Andy?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, Bobby ought to like this one. Uh, the contracts that we just extended, we're extending our contract with O'Brien, their job, what we contract with them, is to actually monitor those companies, to make sure the debris is being collected properly, and that the information is being logged properly, that, that all the, the data and information is correct. So they help us, help assure us not having a problem with FEMA for reimbursement on, on those items. So it's, uh, while we have great emergency service providers, I, I think this is an extra babysitter, an extra step, to make sure that we don't have that problem going forward.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second approve, any members of public wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, uh, public comment is now, uh, closed, so now we can say we're substituting the company that we did have the issue with, with O, O'Brien. Okay, any additional questions, comments, concerns, council? Seeing none, call the, uh, question, please, Russell.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli? Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, item number fourteen.
A resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving a compromise sales surtax proposal between the participating Broward municipalities and Broward County, authorizing the appropriate town officials to execute the, uh, transportation system and infrastructure surtaxes in our local agreement attached here to as Exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference, supporting the county's placement of a thirty-year, one-half-cent infrastructure sales surtax and a thirty-year, one-half-cent county-wide transportation system sales surtax on the November eighth, two thousand and sixteen general election ballot, in accordance with the surtaxes in our local agreement and Section two, twelve point zero five five Florida statutes, providing for distribution of this resolution, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Russell, Andy?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, this is the, the half penny infrastructure surtax that'll be on the ballot this year, uh, in November, accompanying the other half penny for transportation. This is the interle, interlocal agreement with the county. It's, uh, imperative for the council to approve this, so that we can return it to the county by the end of September, should this item pass. We want to make sure that the town will be protected, and that we will receive our, our proportionate share of that additional, uh, tax revenue. If either item fails, or both items fail, obviously, uh, this doesn't pass, it goes away, and the, the interlocal agreement becomes, uh, becomes irrelevant. But, but should it pass, our residents will be paying that, that additional tax, and, uh, this protects the town to, uh, to receive that revenue in return.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second approve, any members of public wish to comment on this item?
Noel Hollingsworth, Hundred and Ninety-Eighth Avenue, could you refresh us as to what the amounts?
Four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
David Kazensky, sixty-four eleven Hollaty Trail. Um, I guess this is one of those issues, you gotta hold your nose, hopefully it's not necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comment? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. Again, we have a motion and a second to approve, any additional questions, comments, or concerns, council? Seeing none, Russell call the question, please.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli?
Yes.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, and for the record, Noel, that's the estimate per year, four hundred and fifty thousand. Item number fifteen.
A resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving a two-year service agreement with Sun City Cleaning Services, Inc., to provide janitorial services at Town Hall, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into the agreement and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Russell, Andy?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, this, this one really is truly a, a housekeeping item. This, this is the company that provides cleaning services here in Town Hall. Uh, we went, we were at the end of our contract on our current provider, who's actually done, done a pretty good job. Uh, we went out to bid, we received four responses, our current vendor went up about fifty dollars a month, but we got somebody new who responded, who gave us a lower price. We're going from, uh, the current eight hundred and fifty to six hundred and seventy-five a month. Well, we, this, the new company's based in Pompano, uh, their references checked out well, and the owner of the company actually, uh, comes out and does the work, uh, participates in, in the project, so, uh, you know, we're hopeful that we'll have some good things and some savings for the town. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second approve, any members of public wish to comment on this item?
David Kazensky, sixty-four eleven Hollaty Trail, um, I just did a little background on the corporation, and I just noticed that, uh, the owner of the corporation has had several corporations involving cleaning that quickly rolled over into administratively dissolved corporations, so I, um, like to act, ask that that be preserved in the contract, and also that any of the employees that are working for this are citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. Again, uh, council, we have a motion to second to approve, any additional questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, call the question, please, Russell.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli? Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, item number sixteen. For the record, please, Russell.
A resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, affirming the town's opposition to the Department of Environmental Protection's weakening of restrictions that would allow an increase in the release of toxic chemicals into Florida's waters, expressing support for placing new limitations on unregulated toxic chemicals, but opposing any measure that would relax in any way, a restriction that prevents, excuse me, a currently regulated toxic chemical from being released into Florida's waterways, urging the United States Environmental Protection Agency not to approve the, the relaxed restrictions, directing the appropriate town officials to take any and all actions necessary to effectuate the intent of this resolution, directing the town clerk to transmit a copy of this resolution to the United States Environmental Protection Agency, the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, the Broward County Board of County Commissioners, and the Broward League of Cities, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for an effective date, providing for conflicts, oh, this was written twice, so, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Russell. Steve?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion to second to approve?
Yeah, I just want to appreciate that. I wanted to thank Jill Aronofsky. She's here tonight, and I just appreciate her work on this. She's really kept us informed on the issue, and really, thank you very much, Jill. It's been very good. So based on that, I asked Keith to come up with a resolution that could show our support for the clean water and our opposition to the relaxation of some of the restrictions that were already in place for certain of the chemicals there. So basically, what this is saying is that we support the changes for the restrictions on new chemicals, but we do not support, we oppose, the relaxation of them on the ones that were already regulated. Now it's been loosening up. So hopefully, we'll pass this tonight. I'm sure we will. And then, you know, I request that we send this out to our neighboring towns and everything, get as much support as we can for this, because this is really, it's critical. It's critical for our town because we have the wells, but it's critical for anybody who lives in Florida because it's what it's all about, so.
Very good, Steve. Thank you. We have a motion to second to approve. Any public comment? Mr. Aronofsky?
Jill Aronofsky, 5781 Southwest 188th Avenue. I want to thank everybody for listening to what I had to say and proposing the resolution tonight, but according to what happened in court with the Seminole Indians, the judge ruled against them, and I guess we're going to have a terrific fight because it's going to go to the EPA. So this is really going to mean a lot, and we have to have many more towns coming on board like we did. Thank you again for all your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Jill, for bringing this to our attention. I'd recommend, in addition to the resolution, that you write a letter to Senator Nelson and to Peter Deutsch, because it's definitely going to go in their direction to the federal level, and if they know we're against this, I mean, that shows them the support I think they need. So-
I don't think you mean Peter Deutsch.
Ted, I'm sorry. No, not Peter Deutsch. Sorry. Representative Deutsch, that's safe, safer. But, I mean, this is bad news. They were shutting down these organizations, if you read the legal decision on it, because they were, they filed their, I forget the name of the type of brief, but they filed it five minutes after five on the day of closing, which automatically rolls them to the next day. The court has made accommodations for this in the past, but wouldn't honor those precedents in this particular one. So this has got the governor's fingerprints all over it, him and his fracking friends. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
David Kazenski, 6411 Hollaty Trail. This is a good issue, but I'd just like to ask that if there is additional litigation that the town can co-party in, I would encourage that, because we have a lot of people that have wells, and we don't have primary sources of drinking water. And, you know, you look 20 years down the road, this stuff is going to seep into our groundwater. We should be very concerned about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing no more public comment. Public comment is now closed. Again, we have a motion and a second to approve. Any additional questions, comments, or concerns, counsel? See none. Russell, call the question, please.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli?
Yes.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, item number 17, which is the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting for August 11, 2016, July 28, 2016, and the budget workshop minutes for August 23, 2016. Got a motion and a second. I know that our residents read them, open it up to the public. Any corrections? Any issues? That's a good thing. No public comment. Public comment is closed. Again, we got a motion and a second to approve the minutes for those meetings. Russell, call the question, please.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli?
Yes.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, item number 18. I think I'll turn that over to you there, Mr. Jablonsky.
This is really Doug's committee, so I, you know-
That's all right.
Segue into that, but I-
I don't mind a bit. Go right ahead.
I would like to say thank you to Manon Stevens for her service on the Ed Advisory Board. She did an outstanding job, volunteered for everything. She, you know, helped with all the fundraisers. She was there. She was a real trooper, you know, made the baskets. Yeah, it was, you know, vertically integrated, top-down, bottom-up.
Ditto.
She helped out with everything. And so she's going to be missed. In the meantime, we have a few more applicants. They're in the back of your books. And I would like to use one of them as my replacement. Leah McDonald, young lady, lives in Rolling Oaks, getting very involved in our community. And Priscilla Stoes, lives in Rolling Oaks also. She's an attorney, and they're very involved with kids, and they're coming in. And we have a third person whose application we don't have yet, and that's Paige Geison, lives over in Griffin 345. But her application in here, so we don't have, obviously, we don't have it, and they've got to go, they've got to do that first. But I'd like to use one of these fine ladies as one of my appointments, and then have the other one as a member in large. Doug, your committee-
Well, as you know, let me join in on you here. The board would like to expand. They didn't tell us how many, but we've never denied anybody as far as expansion, expanding. And on the educational advisory board, they're trying to get more people involved as far as helping do the fundraisers and events and whatnot. So they're trying to work diligently raising more money so we can do out more money to our kids that qualify. So I don't know what that number is, but I guess they're going to find out and come back to us. What's your guess on that, Gary, as far as the expansion?
Well, they've got, the advisory board's got five right now. There's two here, and a third one who's in attendance, but we don't have the legal paper, the application behind it to approve it formally.
Yeah, I just told them to keep the number odd, whatever they do. So I don't know if they want to go to seven or nine.
They've got to hunt down one more individual, which I think is being worked on as we speak.
So just, no action? We're just going to wait until you come back with a recommendation?
Yeah, one of these will, whatever. Which one did you want to appoint? He wanted to appoint one because he's lacking one.
Yeah, I think you need to appoint one.
Yeah, I'll appoint Leah McDonald, you know, as my selection, I mean.
Okay. And then, next meeting, we'll kind of appoint two, right?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
So then the next, then the next meeting, we'll appoint two to keep it odd.
Two more. They want to expand.
Right, we don't have, yeah.
Okay.
Unless you find two more to be clear on.
I wanted to be clear that I'm not making the committee odd. It's an odd number of people on the committee.
We're at six, sevens, and need actually one more than that.
So you're appointing Leah McDonald? Is that who you're appointing?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
And that brings it back to five, right?
No, that brings it to six now.
Oh, I thought, I thought one person left the committee.
Well, it's-
Manon.
Manon, yeah, but-
Manon was his.
All right, I'm miscounting. I need to check. Am I miscounting, Andy?
Five.
Okay, I'm miscounting. My mistake.
So we got to add two more.
So this will get us back to five.
Correct.
And then we've got two more that we can look at next time.
Well, they got to go to seven or to nine.
Correct, right.
Or nine.
Yeah, whatever it is.
Sorry, my mistake.
We don't need official action. We know, what is it? Do we need official action, Keith, a board appointment? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And Doug, I apologize. I know the council liaison, but I know it's his appoint.
Didn't matter to me a bit.
Real quickly, join us Tuesday, September 20, to help raise money for Southwest Ranches Parks. I know that's why you stayed here, Noel, not Noel, but-
Aster.
Aster. You want to make sure that I read this, because you told me you would do to me that if I didn't, and you certainly got my attention. 20% of track dining and carryout sales will be donated. Tell your server you're dining, you are dining to support Southwest Ranches Parks. Again, at Anthony's Cold Fired Pizza on Tuesday, September 20. We hope everybody will be there, and we raised a lot of money for Aster's. And Aster will be there handing out flyers. Okay, I believe that that concludes our agenda. Vice Mayor and counsel, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
And I'm sure it's unanimous. This meeting is hereby adjourned.